As always, let's start with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of public allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Great, thank you. Start it with recognition.
Yes, so seeing as, I know we're set up, but Brian's behind me. Seeing as how we are at Henry James this evening, we wanted to, this year, make a concerted effort, we talked about the board, to recognize either students or staff that are associated with the school when we, when we're at the school for the Board of Education meeting. So although Mr. Foreman, and we did read his retirement into the record, I think at the last meeting reluctantly we did so. So this isn't really about retirement, you know? But we wanted to take a minute and really recognize Brian for the work he's done. He's going to show us a little bit and talk about the Seap perch activities that he's been involved with that were so, have been so successful over the years. But I just wanted to talk a little bit about the impact Brian has had. I mean, he is, we talk a lot about being a great teammate, and being a great teammate means a lot of different things. Brian has fulfilled a myriad of responsibilities in our district over the years and still does. He's been a teacher for 28 years here, I believe, give or take, right? Really has led the way in our tech ed program here at Henry James School. In terms of a person, if you held a contest, who would know the most student's name? Brian connects with students at an incredibly high, high level, always has, does great things for our environment here. He's also a coach of the girls softball team. He's been very involved with the S E A over the years in a myriad of roles and responsibilities I've had in the district. I've worked with Brian over the years in problem solving, in negotiations, and a whole host of things. He's a class act. He does things the right way. Most importantly, he does things in the best interest of the students. And I think that's, that's what Brian would want to be remembered for. I know he wants me to stop talking immediately. He was also, a few years ago, the Chamber Commerce Educator of the Year. We had a nice luncheon for that. But I just, you know, on behalf of the district, Brian wanted to, I know this is painful for you, wanted to thank you, really appreciate what you have done. It's hard to think about moving forward in our district without you, and I've certainly appreciated our relationship and how you've gone about doing the business of being an educator in Simsbury. So, thank you. I will stop, and you can tell us a little about Seap perch.
How thin am I right now?
Pretty good. You don't need the shorts on.
We've got a table of demo stuff, but I'm not sure this is going to end up on you, just so that folks can see. Over the years, we, I think in 2012, I started by going to, in 2012, I started by going to a workshop that has Bill, one of these guys, and ended up doing a competition where I was one of the judges, and I thought this is a perfect fit for our school and our, especially our engineering class. So over the past, since then, I guess, and we competed locally in Connecticut nine times. There was a COVID gap there that didn't happen. Unfortunately, we were getting ready to go, and we all had to go home, so we missed it by a week. But we've gone nine times to state championships here in Connecticut, and we've won eight of them. So we've represented the state of Connecticut, eight out of nine times we've gone. We've been to Indiana University, University of Maryland, LSU, Mississippi State, Georgia Tech, UMass Dartmouth, and we compete against schools from all over the country and now internationally from many, many countries, and it's really a nice event. Sue wanted me to do a demo of this. This is our little underwater robot.
No water tank.
We don't, well, really quickly, just to bore you guys. The last time I was at University of Maryland, gentleman in front of me was from Texas, and he was really upset. He was talking to another coach who was there, and they were mad that they only were allowed to use the pool at the high school three times a week. And he finished up complaining, and he was going to be the next person in line, so he turns around, he goes, "How often your principal use the pool?" I said, "We don't have a pool." He goes, "What?" And I said, "We don't have a pool. I have a fish tank." He's like, "How'd you get here? You're a really good teacher." So, we've, we've seen that as we sort of catch up with this over the years. The first time we went, we came in third in the nation, which was a great achievement. And then since then, the pool thing has kind of caught up with us. We did try the Y M C A one year, but we ran into a very angry man in the shower. Don't want to do that again. But just really quick about this. This is made of basically PVC and some different types of joinery going into the corners. It floats because of pool noodles. This is basic kind of thing. The motors are a standard one. Everybody in the competition has to use them. We have to waterproof them and make sure water doesn't get in there, because that's a no brainer for the little motor. It has a 50-foot tether, and they end up doing the circuitry, resistors and switches on here, and they end up standing on the edge of the pool in the obstacle course, which is one of the events, goes out about 40 something feet, looking down through the water through a series of hula hoops that are about 18 inches across, and they're this way, this way, this way, and this way. They travel through it, they have to come up, break the surface of the water, drop back down, and retrace their steps. Sometimes they tie knots, which is in the national competition, we have little frog men come in and untie them. It's over at that point. They, kind of like a zero-turn mower, you know, with the two handles, is how you kind of do this. So forward V, backwards, up and down, and any combination of which to get them to go do the things. The other part of this is associated with the National Oceanographic and Atmospheric Administration and the Office of Naval Research, where they do some real-time stuff about going down, I just saw this year's thing, it has to do with replanting coral. So they're going to have to maneuver to a series of events that mimics kind of doing that. So it's kind of a real-life application of the stuff that goes on out there in the ocean and try to keep things going for us. So, that's that. I just want to say thank you to Matt, and thank you to everybody who, who had a piece in it, letting me be here as a teacher. It's been, it's been a pleasure, and my granddaughter will be very happy to see Papa Bear for more time than she currently gets to see me and be helping out my kids. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
No worries. Thank you.
So do you ever get to use the pool? Oh, wait, what do I say? We don't have a pool.
It's not on the Capitol.
Wishful thinking.
It's on the roof.
Yeah, right, exactly. All right, next up is public audience.
Yeah, this is kind of weird.
Yeah, in three minutes, please state your name, and move out of the way.
My name is Patty Gonzalez. I have a child at Simsbury High School, and I have address confidentiality protection, so I don't give out my address. But I'm here tonight because I'm a huge advocate for security cameras in every classroom. Last week, there was an incident at the high school, and because I found out what really happened on October 15th, while I was waiting for my son after school, like a dozen police cruisers came in, and I got panicky, and I went inside to find out what was going on, and I couldn't figure it out. So I called a few people, and they made phone calls for me, but everything, from what I understand, it had nothing to do with the high school kid, which is good. So half of this stuff doesn't apply, what I wrote, but you're welcome to look at it. So I'm going to skip right down to the social dilemma. I believe that the social dilemma in society today with kids is that they don't understand why they're on social media so much. So there is a documentary that I recommend the Board of Education watches. It's, I can give you a copy of this afterwards. It's called The Social Dilemma. It's a documentary I recommend every parent, educator, and student watch in order to understand their social media behavior. Social media platforms like Instagram, YouTube, TikTok, and Snapchat have provided crucial opportunities for interaction that are normal, a normal part of development, especially during a time of severe isolation, when we had the pandemic, prompted by the pandemic. But they've also been increasingly linked to mental health problems, including anxiety, depressive symptoms, and body image concerns for girls and boys. The hope is students will curtail their behavior after watching the documentary. Deviant behavior, I thought a high school student, you know, created an emergency last week, but it wasn't that at all, which is good. Simsbury High School students are generally great kids. I've never really heard anything negative, you know, so when I hear something, you know, if there's an emergency, you know, I generally don't think it's a kid, but you never know. But going back to The Social Dilemma, The Social Dilemma is about a handful of tech designers like Facebook, Google, huge companies. They have control over the way billions of us think, act, and live our lives. It is worth exploring this documentary, so you can learn that our time is currency to social media companies that are thereafter are for monetary gain. Our time is currency. That means if they get kids at a young age addicted to social media, as adults, they'll be consumers, and they'll buy products. The reason, that's the reason they want kids hooked on social media. And I think some of you may know this, but not everybody knows what the, you know, this documentary is about. And I think it's important, the Board of Education should look at the documentary, vet it, and if you feel that it's a learning tool for students, you know, that you should show it to them. And I'm sure not all of them, but there's, there's a small amount of kids that will get inspired by this documentary, and they'll take positive action. They'll say, "Well, maybe I should spend more time. Maybe, you know, socially, I should be more connected to my friends instead of glued to the phone like a zombie all the time." You know, and I also believe that kids at the high school, I talked to Beth By, she used to be a state rep, and she agreed with me that kids, I'm a strong parent, and Matt Curtis knows, I'll take my phone, my kid's cellphone away from him if he disrespects a teacher. That's how I am as a parent. Not everybody's like that. My girlfriend, she's at Simsbury High School, she's afraid of her daughter. So when the school took her cellphone away from her, she told me secretly, "I'm glad the principal took her cellphone away from her," because she's rude and she's disrespectful. My son is not like that at all, but he makes mistakes. He's not perfect. The last thing I want to touch upon is, and I'll leave this so you can read it, is that social media is an addiction. There are mental health rehab, rehabilitation centers, believe it or not, across the whole country right now for adults and teenagers. So you should consider looking at The Social Dilemma documentary, it's on Netflix, as a learning tool in addition to supporting security cameras in every classroom, so that if the Simsbury Police does not have access to the building, they still have eyes in the classrooms, you know, or every part of the building. And obviously, you're going to have areas that they can't have access to for privacy reasons, but I think a classroom and hallways, police officers should have access to those areas so that they know who's being, what's going on in the building.
Can we refer to one?
No, I know, I apologize. But like I said, I'm going to leave this behind, and I did reach out to the Newtown Action Alliance for their support with the security cameras. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Yeah.
I'm Lori Boyko from 15 Oakers Road, and I'm going to sit while I say this, because I'm still shaking from this book. I simply don't have the words to express the horror I have for what is being taught in our schools to our children. Before condemning a book assigned as required reading in our senior English classes, I decided to give it a chance and read it, all 372 pages of it. I regret that decision and have to live with what has been seared into my mind. I can't imagine what it does to a child's mind that doesn't have the maturity or life experience adults do, or even worse, a child who has had some traumatic experiences or abuse. I can't for the life of me imagine a single adult who thinks the kite runner is appropriate for any child or teen still in school. Barnes &amp; Noble and Amazon both list it as 18-plus, age 18-plus. Knowing adults who I trusted with my children think this is a good idea makes me seriously question their judgment entirely. The New York Times Book Review, at the time the book was published as an adult book, called the book haunting. It is dark and demoralizing and has no place in any classroom for minors. I am beyond furious that this is what is being required, required reading in Simsbury. I received no parent notification that anything of this nature would be a part of my child's required curriculum. There was no trigger warning, no permission slip, no notice to parents that they might want to be prepared to discuss heavy topics that are described in graphic detail with their children when they arrive home from school. There was no notice that they might need therapy after reading this. It is bad enough that it's in the library where an unsuspecting student might pull it off the shelf and start reading. The title talks about a kite. How bad could it be? But this is required reading with no parental consent, and the only option, if a parent is aware enough to question it, is for the student to be excluded from the curriculum and the classroom and be given an assignment different from their peers. In short, to be deprived of the education the other students are receiving. What a student is left to deal with if they do start reading this book introduces them by page seven to a soldier, soldier who tells one of the central characters he knew, his mother, as he laughs. "I took her from behind by the creek over there. What a tight little sugary cunt she had." I can't even cover the vile content of this book in the measly amount of time I'm allotted as a concerned parent here, but the graphic detail, violence, and explicit sexual content runs the gamut from ruminations about whether fathers harbor the desire to kill their sons, mothers dying in childbirth by hemorrhaging, pain of circumcision, detailed descriptions of slicing the throats of sheep, and that's all in the first 75 pages. Capped off by a traumatic description of anal rape of a young boy whose blood ends up dripping from his pants into the snow, which is replayed in flashbacks repeatedly throughout the book. There are multiple completed and attempted suicides, child trafficking, pedophilia in the rape of another 12-year-old boy by a man, a detailed graphic description of a man and a woman being stoned to death at the halftime of a soccer game, and quote, "hanged corpses rotting in soccer fields with blood-red grass." And the book ends with a child attempting suicide, with descriptions of the razor and the blood in the bathtub, and shockingly, much like speak that the high school requires freshmen to read, the boy stops speaking entirely. It's like these two emotionally impactful bookends to the high school English curriculum. How is this possibly what you expect our students to read? How do you then wonder why they have crippling anxiety and depression when this is what the school thinks is education? How can you all possibly think that an encouraging words campaign is going to help them when what is assigned is so deeply disturbing? The irony is that the book has themes of redemption and atonement and speaking up when, quote, "no one said a word about it out of fear." Read the book, all of it. I don't even have the framework to understand what is being required, and I'm an adult. Stand up and do the right thing and put an end to the barrage of material being forced on our students that is harming them, not educating them. I dare you.
Can I rebuttal that and say something positive? Is that okay? Now, the Bristol, no, I'm saying Bristol has a team of people that vet books. I don't know if they do that here, but that, the same thing happened in Bristol, it's our school district, and the way they solved the problem 15 years ago was they created a team of parents and educators to vet books before they're, and then they make their decision together. I don't know if Simsbury does that, but you should consider it.
It's called the Board of Ed, Board of Ed.
Okay, we're going to move on, people. We're not, we're not going to get into this here. We're not, we're not going to do this. We're not going to do this. Thank you.
Thanks, Patty.
Okay. We're on to the approval of the October 1st minutes, please. Oh, I'm sorry.
We want to do communications.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Communications. Let's start with Rafaela.
There's been a lot of, there's been a lot of community building events recently, notably among the elementary schools. All of them recently have done a cultural enrichment assembly. So they had a group come in that was based in South and Central America, and they shared, like, they shared their love for Latin music and dance. And at Simsbury High School, recently, the social studies honor society is going to actually have like a haunted tour to share Simsbury's history. So it's going to be featuring both the kid-friendly and a not-so-kid-friendly version, so I thought that was nice for the community. Recently, also, the Earth Advocates Club spent this past weekend cleaning up the grounds as part of volunteer efforts. Upcoming, next week, is auditions for the Winter Musical, and soon the fall season is about to end for athletics.
Josh?
No, no committee updates.
No.
Not tonight, no.
I'll say. I'll say, except, I wanted to ask, do you know when the haunted tour thing is? That sounds fun.
It's like October, wait.
And if not, we can look it up later on.
I can check in like one second.
Okay. Well, you're, sorry.
October, October 27th. One at four, the kid-friendly one's at four, and the one at six is the more scary.
That's fun. That's cool.
Sure.
Only update is, Policy Committee will meet, I think, sometime next week, and then I'm glad to be here, I haven't seen you guys since convocation. I've been on travel, so good to see everybody.
Thank you. Lyndon?
Yeah, so briefly, at CRAK last week, we had a very good presentation about the resource groups, which is our big funding, funding area, and the resource groups discuss staffing, they staff Soundbridge, which is our hearing impaired facility, PD, digital AI is a big one that we are focusing on, and equity and anti-racism. We also, you know, are involved with TRP, the Teacher Residency Program, so we are moving ahead swiftly with this, and we had 200 applicants this year, so this is the largest cohort that, that has come through. We also had a nice discussion, nice discussion, which will be continuing. The Secretary of OPM is holding a number of meetings, informative meetings regarding the upcoming legislative session, which will be starting in beginning of February, so it really is around the corner. So the big issues, of course, are the funding issues around the magnets, and as you know, it's a one-year fix this year going forward, but we're really concerned about potential issues, concerns, and, you know, we'll need to, to address what we possibly think they are. So we're going to prepare for the legislative session. We are still wondering who the co-chair of the education will be after election, so that's going to be, be coming up. So that is, that is what's going on, on that front. And then the other front is, a little nicer, is the CAPE CAPS Convention in, in November. It's in a few weeks in November, so you've all received information from CAPE. I hope that you have an opportunity to come, and we have about 80 or so workshops and, and speakers, and our keynote speaker is Dr. Timothy Shriver. He's chair of Special Olympics, so he'll be coming to speak. He spoke at an NSBA conference, so, so we're looking forward to, to being there with 600 of our colleagues and superintendents and, and people around the state.
Yes, sorry. I did want to mention that we did have an equity meeting last week, and it was, we welcomed some new, new members at the high school, and it was great. We've got, we're putting together a plan of the topics that we'll, we'll be talking about, the holiday dates, the professional development for our teachers and our staff, and other, other topics that are important to the equity aspect of our schools.
Amy?
Neil?
Ms. Slumki's going to tell you about all the professional learning that's happening on Election Day, two weeks from today, but I just wanted to mention that for four of our schools from an operations standpoint, we're pulling sites on that day, so the head custodians and the principals have met with our registrars, and we are ready to go at Tooten Hills, Terrafill, Latimer Lane, the new Latimer Lane for the voters to go, and Henry James, and it's been a great partnership over many years, and we are ready to go again, although I hear early voting is like gangbusters already, so maybe a few less visitors than usual.
Nice to you. Thank you.
So for professional development on the 5th, it's a full day of professional development for our teachers. We will start off with some treats from our culinary students that are in the midst of their capstone. So we will be the benefactors of some beautiful breakfast items, and this is their performance assessment, so that's how we're going to kick off our day. And then our keynote will be by Deacon Art Miller, that will be at approximately 8:30 in the morning. Deacon Art has been a great collaborator with us here in the Simsbury Public Schools. And then the majority of our day will be used as the board remembers and recalls, we are under a new, our first year of a new educator evaluation plan. And a huge part of that plan is having teachers develop their own projects that intersect their passion that they have as teachers and student need. And they have put together some pretty detailed and robust action plans, and we're giving them time to work on those action plans, because that work matters. So we will have some opportunity for teachers to come together, page 12, with very similar interest areas, whether that be on student engagement, or increasing independence, or executive functioning skills. So they'll have an opportunity to come and connect and do a little ed camp conversation, and then the rest of the time they will define further action plans. So a great use of their time for great work for kids, and if you have any questions, please let me know, and if you would like to stop on by, let me know that as well. Happy to have you.
Katie? Yeah, thanks. I just want to say that this board thrives and welcomes public audience. We, we excel with the involvement and engagement of the parent community, the business community, and all the communities. So we welcome, again, and, and appreciate the public audience that we receive each and every meeting. But with that, I would like to remind the public that we also have a packed agenda. We're trying to get our business done, and just, I would just ask them to respect the rules that we're trying to adhere to it so we can move along as well. So I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you. Yes, I did want to bring a kind of one topic up that's been difficult and touching at the same time, as you're all aware, and we're here at Henry James tonight. We had the passing of a student, Abby Zatun, who battled cancer from her first grade year until her recent passing. And I had, I will call it, it may seem strange, the good fortune to go to Abby's celebration of life, and I'll get back to that in a second, but I wanted to thank Scott, I wanted to thank Jaclyn for your leadership during this time. It is very, very difficult to help support people with the emotion around something so tragic, and you did it with a lot of class. And I mean, you supported your students, and your staff supported each other, and your staff supported the students. And we've heard from parents about that, so I wanted to thank you publicly for that. As far as the celebration of life, to say it was inspiring is a little short-sighted, but that is how I left. I mean, there were over 1,000 people there, including, I don't want to make it all about this, the entire UConn women's basketball team. And to see Abby's sisters speak about her, Abby's parents speak about her, Abby's uncles, Paige Beckers, and other UConn players speak about her, the life that this child lived, the resilience, we talk about toughness in different ways, the absolute sheer toughness, and the kindness in the way that she went about her, her daily life was really, really inspiring. I've never been in an environment like that. You take a lot away from an event like that in terms of how we want to communicate with each other, how we want to problem solve, what's important at the end of the day. And I just wanted to, to share that with everybody here tonight, a special, special kid, an incredibly special family, and how they've managed and dealt with the challenges over the years, and thank you, thank you again for your leadership, because it's been, it's been a difficult run here, but I felt, I really wanted to say something about it tonight. And when they talk about that, that team of those UConn kids being about what's right, they are about what's right. I mean, it, it was remarkable to hear what they had to say and the relationship that they had with this young woman. So just wanted to share that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, now, on to the approval of the October 1st workshop. Can I get a motion to approve?
been, it's been a, a difficult, um, run here, but I felt, I, I really wanted to say something about it tonight, uh, and when they talk about that, that team of, of those UConn kids being about what's right, they are about what's right. I mean, it, it was remarkable, uh, to hear what they had to say and the relationship that they had with this young woman, so just wanted to share that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, now, uh, on to the approval of the October 1st workshop. Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve the minutes of the October 1st, 2024 meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Great, thank you.
I'll abstain.
Okay, one abstention. Uh, approval of the October 8th meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of October 8th.
Is there a second?
Second.
Great, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Abstain.
One abstention. Personnel?
Just items to report tonight, as there are no retirements or resignations, so it's the final three appointments for certified hiring for the 24-25 school year. We have now officially filled all of our openings with these three hires, so, um, the board can, uh, look at the exhibit to see that we have offered a contract to Rachel Casper. We actually hired Rachel over the summer as a long-term substitute at Terriffill School in Grade Four, and the teacher there, Carolyn Farath, has decided to extend her maternity leave for the rest of this year, so, um, the way that the S E A contract works is that that teacher moves into the position, and assuming that she has a, uh, effective first year, she would be offered a contract for next year, not necessarily at Terriffill School, but would fill the first, um, elementary vacancy, um, as long as she has a successful year in this position, so congratulations to Rachel for that turning into a contracted job. Uh, the final two, as I said to you in our opening report, we were, we had two late resignations of speech and language pathologists, so it took a little while, but we filled both positions. Angela Listaco comes to us most recently from the Bloomfield Public Schools. We know Angela through her sister, Melissa Leonard, who is a math teacher at Simsbury High School, so good connection there, um, and thrilled, Angela, both of these teachers actually started yesterday, so they're on board, and then the other speech and language patho, she'll, I'm sorry, Angela will be at Squadron Line, and then the other speech and language pathologist, Christine Nelson, will be split between Simsbury High School and Terriffill, um, more on the experience end of things there, and she's coming to us from the Grandee Public Schools with glowing recommendations about her work, so the hiring season is over.
Great.
Congratulations.
That's great. Acceptance of the gift to the Cultural Enrichment Committee.
That would be neat. So, as you may recall, the board is required to prevent a gift in excess of $1,500. So, tonight, administration is requesting, uh, your approval, there is, from each elementary school, HPTO has donated funds which have accumulated to $21,456 to be used by the Cultural Enrichment Committee, so there are three specific programs this year, a Latin beat dancing program, Japanese drums and bamboo flutes, and poetry in motion, so those funds will be used to provide these cultural enrichment programs at all five elementary schools, and there is a motion out for your consideration this evening.
Move that the proposed gift of funds from all the elementary school parent-teacher organizations to provide cultural programming to elementary school students be accepted.
Second.
Any discussion?
It's a great program, and it's been going on for so many years, and it's parent-driven, and it's really a very cool opportunity for our students to see cool things and, and expand their cultural awareness.
That's great, just a gift of over $20,000, that's, that's just fantastic, we, we need to take a second to thank them for that, so greatly appreciate, um, that support, that's what I was saying earlier, we thrive on the support of our parents out there, so thank you. Anybody else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, uh, we are on to the Henry James Academic Report.
Terrific. So, this evening, Principal Scott Baker and Assistant Principal Jaclyn Patrulla are here to share with you some of the great successes from Henry James this past year, whether that be, um, relative to culture and climate, around student performance, how they've engaged parents and kids, but also to share some of the challenges ahead in those areas as well, the big work that Henry James will be delving into with the support of incredible teachers like Brian Foreman, led by our department supervisors and of support by Scott and Jaclyn, so they will be tag-teaming this presentation this evening. Please feel free to ask questions, and it's great to be here.
Thank you. Matt, I appreciate you recognizing Abby, I was gonna talk about that a little bit at the start today, um, and I think it's better said by you, I might have had trouble getting through it, but wanted to publicly, um, thank Sue, Katie Crisula, our district crisis team, I don't know if, um, parents or even the board understands all that goes into responding to a crisis like this, and that the support that a school gets, um, we received so much support from the district, from neighboring, uh, from our, uh, schools, the high school, the elementary schools, all state counselors over, so I just wanted to publicly thank everyone for helping us through this, um, you know, it's a tough time for our kids, our staff, our families, um, and we've really felt the support from everybody, and I think these, these times take a true measure of a community, and we've certainly measured up well, I think, you know, so thank you to everybody. All right, on to, we wanna begin with our highlights, um, and talk a little bit about some of the, the high points from last year, and, um, some of it is, continues on into what we wanna do this year, so I won't elaborate too much on some of the pieces that continue on this year, I'll, I'll talk more about that at the, at the, near the end of the, um, presentation, but really proud of the work our SEL Committee, um, did last year, this was a partnership, um, with our students and our committee of teachers to put together, um, a behavior matrix for all the locations in the schools, if you walked in, you might have seen, um, some new posters talking about what we do in the hallway, what we do in the library, what we do in the cafeteria, um, I'll talk a little bit more about that, um, but included a behavior matrix that we created in your, um, in your packet to take a look at. Really proud of our extracurricular life, um, we offer so many different, um, clubs and activities after school last year, we had over 70% of our students try at least something, our goal is to 100, to get everyone to just, in your time between 7th and 8th grade, try something, come to dodgeball, try out the yearbook club, you don't necessarily have to commit, but we want everyone to at least try something and explore at the middle school. One really cool thing about how we approach that is that the clubs are different every year, we have some core ones that stay the same, but if, if students come up with an idea, um, and we have an adult to help run it, then we'll run it, and so we have a couple new ones I wanna talk to you about near the end of the presentation today. Really proud of the work that Jaclyn is doing with our parent-teacher, uh, PTC, um, on our parent education series, we've offered many workshops to parents throughout the year last year, um, and again, we'll talk a little bit more about that later in the presentation about our plans for this year as well. In December, we had the highest-ever donations for PJ Day, um, that HJ has ever had, I think we'll probably triple it this year is my goal, um, so we'll, we'll have more, more on that to come. Really proud of our SpongeBob Musical, kids had a great time with that, really well-attended, um, musical that we did. The three major, like, events that students look forward to is our Fall Festival, um, Spring Festival, Neon Night, and Culture Night. Culture Night here last year had, I don't know, 3, 5, we couldn't fit everybody. There's standing room only in the cafeteria, and the food that families brought, it's really turned into, um, one of those events where we probably need a bigger place, um, so we're excited about what that's gonna bring this year. Fall Festival is this Friday, um, tickets are on sale, $5 in the calf, um, and, uh, students are getting really excited about that. We've talked a little bit about our awards with robotics, um, Sea Perch, um, annually just does such an awesome job, we're gonna have to look far and wide to find someone to fill Brian's shoes on that one. Math Counts won several awards, we had, um, some awards in the state chess tournament, and we had the Simsbury Teacher of the Year, Chrissy Sestone, um, was our, was the Simsbury Teacher of the Year last year, something to celebrate. We did our, we kicked off our second, um, One, One School, One Book program, where every student, um, receives a book before they head off for the summer, um, and so that started last ye, that started two years ago, this is the second year we've done it, um, we were able to get the author to come visit this year as well, um, we'll see more about that in a little bit, too, so, just some highlights, I think pictures worth a thousand words, you can see some of the pictures, um, of some of the kids, the Culture Night on the top left there, the Team Spirit with the kids all in purple, um, you could see, we have our pep rallies and, and volleyball game, where kids get really excited, um, about cheering on their team, Neon Night is down there on the left, um, we have our musical in the middle, um, Winding Trails is obviously a really popular thing, um, right at the start of the year that we do with the 7th graders in the middle there. Down on the right is our Field Day, which the 7th graders participate in, it's kind of one of those rites of passage where everyone's in colors and they, they have competitions of who wins how many points and all that kinda stuff, it's really fun. We have a new mascot costume, so we have a lion there, um, and we're, I think we're still deciding who's gonna get to be the lion this year, um, and then obviously our Teacher of the Year on the top right, but just good to see some pictures from the year, um, of some of our highlights. So, wanna jump right into, you know, when we look at our strategic plan, um, we look at so many things, we look at our academic data, we look at our survey data, um, and obviously look at our highlights and like the, the cultural, um, data as well. I'm gonna bring you through our academic data, um, and then Jaclyn will take some time and talk through our survey data, um, and some of our efforts with Character Ed, and then, um, following that, I'll go through kind of a, a walkthrough of what our plan is for this year, okay? So, um, to begin on the indicator success, the SBA is the Smarter Balance Assessment, this is that test we take, um, in the spring, um, a, a couple days in a row, and I think it's important to note that, you know, when we see the transition from elementary school to middle school, you often see a little bit of a decline, um, from that time when students are making that adjustment, um, and such, I've talked about that in prior years, um, something we're pretty proud of in ELA is this year for Grade Seven, no decline, we stayed right at 74% of our students' meeting goal or above, um, and so, I think that's a really bright spot, um, for our 7th grade data, Grade Eight was at 72, it's a 3% decline, you know, like I said, you see some variation from, from year to year, that's, I think, to be considered normal, plus 3, minus 3, um, in a, in a year with the same cohort, um, but we are, we're within that top 5% of DIRG B for ELA, so I think that's, that's, um, a strong performance and a consistent performance with ELA. And, and how we get there, I think, is by focusing on our specific standards, um, for example, like, teachers are picking, they're going through the, the Smarter Balance data from the prior year and saying which particular standards that our students having trouble with, one of them that they annually have some trouble with is connotation and denotation, meanings of words, um, and such, and then the listening has been one that has been, um, annually a weakness, but we're seeing growth in that standard because what we're doing is taking a lot of those listening standards and embedding them into the world language, so as students are, um, learning, learning in their world language classes, we're focusing on those particular skills that would translate from learning a language to learning, you know, becoming more proficient in English, um, and looking at those skills and reinforcing them. The One School, One Book also, I think, is really good because keeping summer reading alive and having that common experience for, for students, and that, that ability to talk about one book, um, I've been, I, I don't know if you read in the newspaper, I read in the newspaper somewhere, um, like, the number of full books kids read has gone down so much because of, you know, the, the phones and stuff like that, um, so the more we can do things like making reading social and making it something that they, they experience together, I think is one of the keys to keep kids reading full books. Another bright spot is our science, science, um, we've traditionally been doing very well with, top, you know, top in our DIRG, um, with that, we had a 1, 1% decrease from last year, um, and I think the way we're getting these results is really two-pronged, number one, the curriculum's really focused on, on these, um, ne, next-generation science standards, um, where they really prepare students to think critically, respond to phenomena, so lessons will begin with, you know, some particular thing, like the reason why you could take a paperclip, um, unfold it and expose it to heat, and then it folds back, why does it do that? And so, you know, students are able to, to think through those things, go through a set of, um, go through a set of prompts and be able to figure out why that happens and explain it, and that's a lot of what the Smarter Balance, uh, measures, is that sort of stuff. The other thing that I think we do really well is in Grade Seven, um, is we expose them to a practice test, and so the students are able, they take the similar type of questions, and the teachers are able to, in their professional learning communities, kinda go through and continually prepare, because the science is a test that you only give in Grades Five, Eight, and 10, so you don't necessarily get a good read on where students are, um, from year to year, so while our 8th graders are taking that Smarter Balance test, our 7th graders are doing kind of a practice one that we've made in-house, um, so I think that that's another reason why we're, we're doing pretty well in the science.
So, I have a question.
Yes.
So, why does the paperclip do this?
I'm asking for Neil, okay?
I'm gonna have to refer that to Greg Kerr, our, our science supervisor, um, it has something to do with the memory of the, of the chem, of the bonds, but I can't get any further than that, in the classroom I saw it and it stuck in my head, um, so I'm exposing my weakness in the science. All right, so, math last year, we were at this table, and, and we were looking at, like, wow, we made some incredible gains, um, in, in, in math last year, and I think this year we've seen, and I'll use a math term that I am very familiar with, because my daughters in AP Statistics rounds, we're seeing a regression to the mean, um, last year, um, but, um, our results weren't, I think, where we expected them to be, um, and I wanna just go through where we are, and then, and then I think, in the next couple slides, explain why we think that is, and then what are we doing about it now? So, we had a 59% of our kids, so we went back to, like, right around where we were coming out of COVID, um, so it was a 6% decrease overall as a school in students' meeting goal from last year, um, Grade Seven came in at 59% of students' meeting goal, um, so for that cohort from 6 to 7, it's an 8% decline, which is, like I said, with the ELA, like, plus 3, minus 3, that's kind of like the noise of testing, um, minus 8's not the noise of testing, like, that's where I would say there's something, um, that we wanna look in here, um, and for the grade before it, it was a 4% grade-level decline. A bright spot is there was no decline in students in special education in terms of percent of kids' meeting goal, so that's, that's a bright spot. In Grade Eight, we had 60% of our kids meet goal, again, a cohort of 6% decline and a 5% grade-level decline in that one. A note, like, we really were digging into this data, when I looked at the 7th grader, the 7th to 8th grade kids who were there, and you look at the kids right in the, right around the line of goal, a full 10% of those kids who didn't make goal in Grade Eight did in Grade Seven, by the difference of probably 2 to 3 questions, but when you look at variables that we'll talk about, those are enough to move those kids, you know, a full 10%, like, a full 10% of our kids down, and we'll talk about that, so, we're concerned really about the decline in our DIRG comparisons, because you say, well, was the test benchmarked differently or something? I don't think so, I mean, I think that, um, we'll look at why, um, we went there. When we look at our, one of the other benchmarks that we have for math, um, is our star average, our target is 50, it's based on what's called a student growth percentile, and so this assessment that we give, um, if, if a student makes a, a student growth percentile of 50, that means that they're growing at the average rate, so they should progress from one year to the next at goal. Our SGP was 52, so it was above, so when we took a look at that, we were thinking our students were making okay progress, um, in, in, at the mid-year. So, to talk a little bit about the reflection on this, so, talked about our strong gains that we made last year, um, not necessarily translating this year, one of the big pieces of the puzzle that I think we have, and I, I know a few of you sitting at this table had students in that 7th grade, is that we had some really significant staffing challenges, you know, we always have situations where students might have, our teachers might have a long-term, um, need to be out of the classroom, we had several of those, um, last year, and one of the challenges is, is math is a shortage area, and we could not find a qualified math substitute for, um, for most of these leaves, and so it led to us pulling our, um, intervention teacher to teach the class for some time, and so then what that does is it compounds the fact that now our students don't necessarily get the intervention from the intervention teacher they had, and if you can't find a substitute for a math teacher, it's even harder to find a substitute for a math intervention teacher, um, and so those were real challenges of last year, and I would say what you lose there also is the team that was working so hard that year before to come up within their professional learning communities, the spiral view, to, to look at student data, to be on it, like, every week like we were the prior year, so, I think that's part of the problem, but I think as, as I'll explain, there's other things, too, um, the mid-year star data indicated that we were doing all right, that's problematic when we have, um, when we have a, a, a benchmark that's telling us that things are okay, and they really weren't, um, and so I'll talk to what we're gonna do about that in a minute. I think another thing we did, and I celebrated this at, at the past couple appointments, is students setting goals, they set goals with their star scores, so they would take, like, a, a diagnostic in the fall, and they would say, okay, I wanna make this much growth on my star score, um, and we never really talked to them about, what about your S Back score, or what about your Smarter Balance score, I mean, so I think we may have unintentionally told them to focus more on their star than the Smarter Balance. And then finally, the testing culture, we, coming out of COVID, created a, a very efficient, um, Smarter Balance schedule for testing, um, where we do it, we run the schedule almost like an early release, and, um, have the students do the test first thing in the morning, which I think is still a good idea, but one of the things we did coming out of COVID is, well, if you don't fin, if you finish your test on the first day, you don't necessarily have to come back the next day, because remember, we didn't want you don't necessarily have to come back the next day because remember, we didn't want students here, right? So we never really explicitly said that. But I think as the testing sessions go on, math is the last one we give, that students kind of maybe got that in our heads, and I'll explain they actually did because they gave some reflection on that for me, that they rushed. And so I think some of our testing culture. So when I say we look at our reflection of why we are where we are, there were a lot of things, I think, that contributed to taking a lot of those kids who were right near that goal line and and just enough enough factors there kind of pushed them there. So what I want to get into real quick is just how are we addressing this? Like, what are we doing? So number one, I was able to get some grant funding through our Title Nine, Title One, not Title Nine, Title One funding to pilot a new district, a new new data platform called iXL for our students. And what this data platform does is gives much more fine-grained information on individual skills. And we we need that, especially for our eighth grade students, to know which skills maybe they missed last year because of some disjointed teacher and units not being, you know, taught in a consistent way, to know where each student is and like at this, before a unit, say, on functions, we know which skills they need before they go ahead and teach that. So this platform, we are hoping will help us do that. And I think we're already seeing that as the teachers are working to, the students have taken their diagnostic test and now they're kind of poring over this data. What it also does is give them customized practice. So it's not like the teacher needs to come up with an individualized practice for each student based on their diagnostic test. The program will give them some customized practice to skills that might be lagging as well. So we're working on that. Student goal setting, we've had students set goals now, taking a look at their SFS scores from last year and 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 then set some targets for this year in terms of what they want to get. And later on, I'll share with you some of their reflection. We had some reflection questions on there that I'll share with you. We're revising the test day procedures to slow the students down a little bit, to have them just do like one half of the math section the first day, next half of the math section the next day, rather than just trying to motor through it. And then, you know, last two pieces is integrating high engagement teaching strategies where you've got, and this is work that was in the works the year before too. So I don't want to say that this is brand new, but really looking at our math and focus curriculum, using our new teacher evaluation plan to have math teachers looking at their instruction and create high engage, high engagement lessons in math where they can really collaborate.
Scott, I have a couple of questions. So a couple of things. One, can you change, I know you said you're doing math over a couple of days, but can you, you also said that math was at the end of the day, so kids were rushing through it. And and we all know some of the challenges some students have around math.
For sure.
Can you, you know, I think about the greater energies in the morning versus the afternoon. Can you switch it or have you thought about maybe that flip of having math be earlier?
So math, all the testing is in the morning.
Okay.
So they take it, it's kind of like a two-hour delay. They come in and they take the test for two hours and then they go about their school day. But we did change for this year is math was the last test given. Math is now going to be before ELA. So we are switching the order of the test.
Okay, that's what I was getting, yeah. Let it be first, yeah, because the energy. One more thing. And then the other thing was you mentioned the challenges of last year, you know, some of us are aware of those and having to use an intervention. And we know when the intervention folks will put in place. And so how about this year with the start of the year? Do you still have that challenge? Do we have a gap around intervention? Is that something we're going to need to look at?
We have our intervention teacher back in place. And we do have a long-term seven, one of the math classes, but we have a certified teacher who is doing an excellent job in there. So I think that 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 challenge hopefully was a unique one.
Please let us know because we know that math has been a topic.
Right? Yeah. I mean, we we left no stone unturned last year trying to call all of our, usually we're able to get a retired math teacher to come in.
You know who I'm thinking about.
Yeah, I know who you're thinking about. We twisted as much of the arms as we could and we couldn't get it, but.
Reach out to us sometimes.
For sure, for sure.
Just a quick question on the the way the tests are given is like when we were in school, it was, you know, fill in the bubble and I haven't had a kid in middle school for a few years. Is it now all on the Chromebooks?
Yes.
And so you're hitting like A, B, C, D, or one, two, three, four, or?
It's it's a wide variety. So if you look at the math, some of it's multiple choice, some of it is fill in your answers, some of it is they do a performance task, so it requires more writing and analyzing of a problem. So another challenge for the kids which we're looking at is the questioning is so different than what they might see on their regular math test and in their textbooks. You know, instead of saying like, which is the correct answer is which one of these is not equivalent to the other one or, you know, so it's it's worded in such a different way. So we're also focusing with students on, we're asking test questions differently throughout the year and then also providing more like interim assessments provided by SBA too with our students to take that and experience the computerized platform because just manipulating sometimes, like moving points because it'll say drag this point or draw this line. They need to know how to use that tool as well. So that's where embedding more practice.
That's great.
So I get the staffing issue and I get the trying to take the test better, but going through this with two sons of SAT, I guess, very much.
Yeah.
But I guess my question though is, do you think we have a fundamental teaching issue though, right? We're talking about staffing and testing, but we're not really talking about, do they understand the math?
Yeah.
I think there's a fundamental problem there, I guess, is what I'm asking.
I think there was with the particular classrooms where kids were were there, right? Do I think that right now? No. And I think the data supports that when we had our curriculum in place, like we were making really great gains in the prior year. So I'm, you know, I'm pretty confident this year is an interruption is what it is.
And the assumption back to what Jeff is saying is that you're watching and monitoring those same students.
Yes, for sure.
And I go back to what Jeff is saying because they're going to go to high school, right? And if they don't understand it now, then that same issue, which is where we.
Right. And math is pretty unforgiving on that. If you either, you you understand it or you don't.
That's right.
And so, you know, we're we're fully aware of that.
I just wonder how many, sorry, I just wonder how many kids are like on their Chromebook taking these tests and they're just like, ah, screw it, like just hitting keys and just to get it done versus.
We had some of that for sure.
There's some of that.
And even in the reflections that students wrote, they admitted to that. I mean, there was kids who wanted to sleep in the next day. I was also, I was in a goal-setting meeting today with a math teacher and we were talking about like teaching kids to write, even though it's on the computer, like that they've got to be able to write the math out before they transfer it into the computer. And so like teaching them that skill set of, you know, it's not just do it in my head, that they've got to be able to kind of still, like they went on a test, still, you know, do it out and transfer it in. But there's definitely kids like with, they're taking STAR, they're taking regular tests, they're taking, you know, SBA and there's test fatigue.
Yeah.
And I know it's not affecting their grade and yeah.
It's that balance, right? Kind of a culture that it's important.
Right. And I think something like we worked with Sue with is I think in middle school, there's like high school SATs carry a lot of weight, right? In elementary school, you're sitting with your teacher that you're with all the time and there's, you want to impress them. In middle school, they're going through a lot emotionally, physically, and the tests don't carry the same weight personally for them. And so we've talked about and Sue reached out to the State Department for us to see if we can scores start to come out after they take them in May, but they don't get to sit with their teachers and talk to them about it. And we've gotten permission to kind of maybe not give the exact scores to kids, but talk to them about, yep, you met goal.
Did they meet, did they meet their target?
So that they know in our, yeah, in our goal setting, that kids are going to know, you're going to sit with your teacher at the end of the year and have that conversation. And you're going to, there's a little bit more ownership and a little bit more like, oh, I do have to respond back to my teacher on how I did and how hard I worked and how I prepared. And I think that's going to have an impact and carry a little weight for them because it's there's not a college, you know, or anything like huge resting for them on the test. And so we want, we want them to have, you know, feel the importance of it and the weight of it.
We should put a metric.
Also comment on the on the teaching component that you spoke about. And, you know, Scott has on this slide around data focus PLCs. And I just want to lift that up a little bit and say what that's all about. So what's really clear is there are very much common assessments, both in grade seven and grade eight. And we're looking at those assessments through the curriculum review year this year. So it's not just about that common assessment. It's around coming together in a PLC, all grade seven math teachers and looking at, how did our kids do on these skills and on this knowledge that we say is so important? And really digging into that and saying, what haven't they got yet? So what are we going to do about it? And it's not just that we can keep going and do the same thing that we've done and think that we're going to get better results, right? That has implications for instruction and the teach. So Scott, Jacqueline, myself, Pat Long, the department supervisor, are working, have been working on a plan to make sure that this is something that we bring back to instruction, bring back to these groups and keep an eye on as we go through the the school year. I'm really excited about what we're seeing from iXL as a new data platform. It groups students by skills that they don't have yet. They kind of bring them back to, hey, before they're going to get this next skill, they have to solidify this first. So it not only gives you really good assessment information, it gives you somewhere to go instructionally. And what do you have to pre-teach? What do you have to reteach? And what don't you have to waste time on for certain kids that already have that skill and keep them going? So I think it's in, it's going to be an interesting marriage between the data that we're getting, deciding upon what are the next steps instructionally and making sure that that continuously happens throughout the course of the year.
And Sue, I know you just mentioned kind of the specific action plan. And I know we're making revisions to that and tweaking it. But that's something I would like to be able to share with the board once that's set because I know it delineates kind of timelines and actions. I think it would be good for board members to get their eyes on that based on the questions we've heard.
Absolutely.
Thanks for that, Matt, because I was going to say that because I think we keep talking about math, you know, and so it's almost like some other things that we talk about. If we could just have more of things.
The next slide.
Yes, that's right.
So a couple of questions, thanks, Jack. On the iXL, that's now primary, just for seventh and eighth through this grant, right?
We're also using it right in some other, it's about ninth grade.
In some high school classes for English. We are using it for all students with IEPs in grades two through twelve. And this is considered like we're looking at this as a pilot year to see what kinds of information that we're getting back. What is really promising is that it does give you some individualized data as well as some small group and larger group data. So it has applicability and transfer for IEPs. How are we monitoring progress on goals? And it gives us some more well-defined pinpoint areas that if we rectify, we think we can post an achievement cap. I don't want to put, I don't want to oversell it right now because we're in month two and we're still learning. As a matter of fact, many of our teachers tomorrow are going to be working with some partners at the company iXL to do some diagnostic and analytic kind of reports because we are still learning as we go, but we are very encouraged by the, how it's very much aligned with grade level standards, aligned with ESPA itself. So more to come. And I would love to give the board a more comprehensive update on the on the diagnostics platform.
That would be great because it sounds like an interesting tool, if it plays out the way it has been so far, to use for sixth graders to help figure out class sorting when they come into seventh. Like these kids have similar areas of strength and weakness. We could put them in one class with one teacher who can focus that just to make it a little potentially easier on the teacher to give instruction to the kids if we have the data.
Yeah, I'm not sure if we really thought about it that way, but more on grade level standards and how that plays out, whether that be math seven, whether that be in a pre-algebra class. So I think we're thinking about it more in that way. As we know, STAR is still being used at the elementary level, but this is providing us some good information. I don't want to say we're going to move everyone into iXL yet because we're still learning. But I think that that's a possibility. If we like what we see and it's giving us better information than STAR is, this is the reason why we're testing it out right now.
Yeah, it sounds like a great program. The other question I have is about the cohort who had the year with the difficult staffing issues. Are they getting assistance, additional assistance from the intervention team to kind of get them out as we've talked about math bills?
For the, for the most part, you know, teachers are using the data that they get from those student, like from those students. Are we, do we have a full intervention for each one of those students? And I would, what I would say is, no, we're not like have that. But it's informing what what teachers need to do at the start of each unit with with where they are. Because some students in that, you know, student growth, and this is a two-day test too, right? Some students showed amazing growth, like two grade levels of growth that were in that in that classroom setting as well. I mean, I think what our circumstances did is it moved the margins of of students. I wouldn't say that students are wholly unprepared for eighth grade, if that makes sense.
Yeah. So then I have one other question that I think it was ten percent. I don't have a slide up.
Yep, it was ten percent.
So that ten percent, was that all attributable to that particular cohort or is that across?
No, it was across, it was across the grade. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Was it heavier of a situation there?
Not, not really. Like when you try to look for those trends. But I think like the impact is what Sue was talking about, the power of our professional learning communities and how we bring those common assessments together. That just wasn't happening with the regularity that it that it usually does. And so I think you lose some of that in our belief in the power of collaboration with our teachers in terms of problem solving with kids at a critical time in the year. Really, we're talking like, you know, November to to March, we missed that.
Scott, on the the breakdown of the cohorts, do we have data that breaks down like the math seven versus the pre-algebra?
Yes.
Because I'd like to see that because one of my concerns there would be if you come in at an accelerated and then you pay the price for that because what you have to learn, there's more coming at you faster than the math seven. And then to that point, if we have that data and you have students that are doing the accelerated, had a rough year, stay in the accelerated. If it's another rough year, time's passed, they're gone, right? So I'd like to see that breakdown of those who did accelerated and how they performed year over year and those that did the math seven. And then as far as to Jessica's question, it's a good question, right? The additional. So when will we know as far as those students that took a step back? If they're on the right trajectory to get back in the game, right? Because it was like you, you mentioned regression to the mean. So now how do we get them back on the upswing again before end of next year where they're already, they've come, they've gone and it's too late for them in that group?
Sure. So that's one of the reasons why I wanted to try iXL because a part of it is, is that the students are doing about a half an hour a week work with iXL. And what it does is it gives a real-time diagnostic of where the students are performing and how they're growing through the year. So we know month to month where our students are and we're looking at that, obviously with a real sharp eye in eighth grade to to see these students, are they increasing at a steeper trajectory than, you know? They should be. If they, if they had a little bit of a lag last year, we should be seeing them increasing at a steeper trajectory. So that's the kind of conversation that's going on at PLCs and the data we're reviewing each week on students. So so to answer your question, we're looking at it like week to week, month to month, in terms of how students are progressing.
And then what's the actionable items out of that? I'm curious.
Right. Well, you have your, obviously your students that are, you know, doing fine, great. Those that aren't progressing it, then, you know, we need to look at it. We pull small groups of students together. We look at what skills are they still having trouble with. Like just say they're having, you know, trouble with, it's common multiple or something, right? And we're pulling them together and making sure they have those skills.
We also started, one of our math teachers started a math homework club. We've traditionally had a regular homework club, but we started a math-specific one so students could, you know, go into that. And also the other part of looking whether or not students need the tutoring support or the more tiered math intervention. So that is all part of the process too when we're looking at data.
Are you seeing, are they, is there a good take-up rate for the math homework club?
Not huge, yeah.
We're still getting rolling. We're still getting rolling.
It's just started, so we'll see.
Josh, what's the data pull you want again? I'm writing it down to make sure.
Just math seven and pre-algebra.
Yeah, just the breakdown. I've got the different classes.
I still want to make that pitch about high schoolers need volunteer hours. And have we ever considered starting that math lab being sourced through high school and like have it as a sign-up genius or something so you don't have a bunch of high schoolers here with no one here?
So great. It's a great idea. National Honor Society needs their hours.
Correct, they need those hours. They can take a bus right here.
I thought there was something that they did because I saw an NHS once that they said that there was like something with math tutors in the middle school. Was that already something?
Last year they did computer science. Another student who came down and helped with computer science from the high school. But they also did like a, like a STEM club and stuff after school with kids too. So I don't know if that's what what you're thinking about. It's certainly something we can look into.
Just saying.
Yeah.
Those kids need those hours.
It's a little intimidating sometimes.
It's a little intimidating sometimes.
Yeah, you could also like partner with Math Honor Society in addition to NHS.
Yeah, right. They also need hours too.
Excellent point.
Any other math questions?
Thank you. Appreciate it. Excellent.
All right. Just to continue on where we are, you know, in terms of plans of improvement for the other subjects, our ELA, um, we're looking at continued collaboration with departments. Like getting those literacy skills across the curriculum is really essential. Um, so, you know, we're teaching the skills in ELA, but they're applying them in social studies, world language and such. Um, and then ELA is using IXL, not to the same extent as math. Um, we don't want to over IXL students. Um, but we do use some online platforms for vocabulary and grammar. And we're, um, looking to see how the IXL platform may replace some of that work and give us, you know, more streamlined data um, on the grammar and vocabulary. In science, you know, we're going to stay the course and continue to, and teachers were just at a workshop this weekend um, down at, um, at the Science Center, looking at the NGSS-style lessons to, to teach into that critical thing and embed more of that type of teaching into their, into their teaching. And then one other piece, I don't want to go too much into it, but incorporating our, our S- Smarter Balance scores into our hands-up process. We have this process where teams get together, all the teams of, all, all the teachers of a team of students get together. We actually read the name of every student. I think I've explained this before at different board meetings. Um, and really it's a process where someone puts their hands up. It's either they want to do a recognition of a student or they may say this is some, an area of concern with the student. And oftentimes it's focused on behavior or work completion or some grades. Um, but we're incorporating the, um, the Smarter Balance scores as another piece of that universal screen as we're going through student to student. Um, so someone at the table will have the scores and be like, ooh, this is a student, to, to your point, Josh, like that declined a lot last year. Are there any other reasons why that might be? Um, could it be social-emotional? Could it be, and have that discussion about that student. Whereas before maybe that student would have slipped through and be like, no, they're fine. Um, so that's another screen we're using there, um, the Smarter Balance scores. Okay. Any other questions about academic performance before I hand it off to Jacqueline?
Um, so we just wanted to share some of our end-of-year survey results, um, from the students, the staff and the families. Um, and so starting with the students, one of our overall strengths was, that we saw growth in was um, students feeling safe and feeling like they belong as part of Henry James. And that's something that we've been working on a lot as a community, really building since COVID, that sense of community back for the school. Um, so we're excited to, that students feel welcome, they feel supported, they feel safe. In our wellness classes, they worked a lot with, um, making sure you have teachers that you're connected to. And so, you know, they surveyed the students throughout the year. Can you name a teacher that you feel connected to? And then by the end of the year, they were writing those teachers' notes and stuff like that. So everyone had them hanging up around the building. It was good for the teachers to know that students felt that way. Um, and, you know, for the kids to know that they had people that they could count on. Um, Scott talked about the clubs and the team spirit. That was an overall strength for us too. Just bringing back kind of the joy into school too, uh, which was really exciting for us to see. Um, some concerns, um, the bathrooms are always a concern. You know, they're updated, they're clean, um, you know, but it is what it is. Um, water bottle, water bottle fillers. Um, and of course the desire to have AC. Um, and we're hearing results from kids, so they want better lunches. Um, and they want more breaks in the day, so they want, you know, that time. We did build into our connections, some, you know, each grade gets a different day where they can go outside and do some activities and get some fresh air. So that's been good for students. Um, and then one thing that students did notice is that some students, they, from their perception that some students aren't getting in trouble that maybe should get in trouble for things. And what they don't see is kind of the work that's being done behind the stu-, behind the scenes with those particular students. Um, so that's a hard one to explain to some kids that there may be a plan in place for someone that they aren't aware of and they aren't a part of. Um, but in response to some of our data, um, we talked about, and Scott will talk more about, creation of clubs and, and kids. We have some exciting ones that started this year, kids just finding different ways to get involved in the building. Um, we installed water bottle fillers throughout the building. We have more and, I mean, people were cheering. The, the kids were cheering, the teachers were cheering. It also helped us like with our hallway wandering. You know, kids weren't walking from music all the way over to the cafeteria to fill their bottle. Um, so that actually helped with some behavior stuff that we were seeing in the hallways. Um, and then, you know, just hearing the kids with the behavior is that we really are focusing this year on consistency, like making sure, you know, some kids are aware of consequences, you know, in a delicate way that other students might be receiving. But how can we show them we are consistent with behaviors without providing too many details? Um, and we're continuing with our ROAR goals this year, so students are setting them in connections. And we pared it down a little bit this year that they're setting an academic goal and then a social-emotional goal. And they're checking in with their connections teachers on that. So they have a goal about community and then obviously how they want to improve academically.
So before you go on.
Yeah.
Belonging.
Yep.
So can you talk a little bit about that? Cause that's, I mean, that, I mean, I understand it's 61.7, but what's in that?
What's in the belonging? I think it's, do you feel part of this community? Part, like, is there a place where you feel like you fit in in HJMS? Oh, that's okay. Um, and so belonging could be anywhere of, I've got an adult to identify with. I have a club that I can belong to. I have, you know, I feel connected to the curriculum, to the material. Like I want to come to school each day and be here.
So is it higher than it's been?
These are questions we've tracked over the past three years.
Yeah, so the belonging, we saw an increase. And of 3%. You can see over, oh, it's not there, but it went up 3%. So it's something that we're definitely focusing on as, as a staff too.
Okay.
How many people respond to that first survey?
The students, all of them.
The students, pretty much all of them.
But they don't necessarily answer all the questions?
No, they do because you kind of have to click to go to the next page. You know, but to your question of belonging, there's not a huge description in the question. And this is a district-wide survey that we're using. It's not one that we generated personally. One thing that we did generate, and I don't have that data in front of us, is that we, this survey goes out to eighth graders, but we actually give it to seventh graders. So, cause we want to make sure. The growth from seven to eight.
Yeah.
So that's something that we did on our own was give it to the whole school. So we could see like, was there, you know, did the students feel like they grew from seven to eight? And they're feeling a belonging, a feeling of safety. And we did see that growth in students from grade level to grade level. So. Cause otherwise the kids are gone in the year that we surveyed. So you don't know if, if you're doing something better because you have a whole different cohort.
Tip to the high school.
Yeah. Um, oh, I'm flipping my page. It's not flipped. Um, for the faculty and staff, again, we saw an increase of 11% for belonging. And so that is really important, um, that the faculty, because we got comments of, I feel like I'm isolated in my department or in my team. And so one of the things that we did last year was we had them create, um, kind of like playing cards, like trading cards with their information. And we talked, you know, we shared it with things that they were interested in, foods that they liked, how long they've been in the profession. Fun facts. Um, you had everything from I ride motorcycles to, you know, I, you know, climb Mount Everest or whatever it was. But it was, and we hung them up during the display case out there and we're actually recycling them because people loved like to learn about each other. And we also focused on some activities through professional development. Um, just to bring the staff and community together and chili cook-offs and, um, cookie bake-offs and, and stuff like that too. Just fun stuff to feel like they have a, a community here. But also that they have a voice and, and Scott and I have very much an open-door policy that people can come and talk to us and express their opinions, their concerns, their celebrations. And I think that's really important. Um, you know, and then that goes to speak about being a good fit in this building. People, 94%, um, you know, it doesn't get much better than that. Um, that they feel like this is the place that they want to be working.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, speaking to what Sue said, they felt this is more of a district-wide response too that they had more choice in the professional development that they're getting. And that's even more so this year, they're going to focus on something that they're passionate about. It's not necessarily a PLC goal or a department goal. It's something that they want to improve about themselves, which I think is really vital for them. Um, and then kind of repeating the scheduled wellness, um, opportunities for wellness and belonging. And we even did PD before our volleyball tournament. We did wellness teachers taught a volleyball unit to our teachers. And it was probably the best PD of the year. The teachers enjoyed each other's company. They had fun.
No injuries, but we lost to the students this year. So this year it's going to be tryouts.
Yeah.
It's going to be tryouts, it's going to be cuts.
I don't know that happens with belonging, but you know, we're, we're working on it.
You have Greg Core on the faculty and lose at volleyball.
Yeah, that's kind of.
Good question. We had too many people on the team.
Rotation of 20 people, so.
Out front row, that's a difficult people.
I will admit it's not my strength and I will opt out if needed. Um, some concerns, behavior was a concern. We had some students with some particularly very open, big behaviors last year. And it did take away from some of the learning environments. And so that was a concern for faculty. They want to make sure that the students are safe, that they're safe, um, and that kids are learning. So they expressed that throughout the year. Um, and cell phones were a big concern. Um, and for us to respond to their, the data, we continue to focus on unstructured settings. So we've implemented some hall duty coverage where we have staff to be able to do so. Um, people in the cafeteria in the morning. Um, we have more people out front in the building in the morning, out back in the building of the building. So just really trying to supervise those unstructured settings. Also in lunch, we tried to get more people in. Uh, but we also started offering an alternate location for students who aren't comfortable in that kind of setting. And some of them are students that would create issues. Some are just students who are overwhelmed. So we're really looking at kind of creative ways to solve the unstructured settings. Um, I think we shared with you before our cellphone plan with students, which has been amazing. It's been nothing short of amazing. It's not the easiest to implement, but boy, have we noticed a huge difference with behaviors, with academic. I'm hoping that actually has an impact on our.
That's what I was gonna say.
Kids are focused in class. Teachers are just so appreciative of the fact that kids aren't under their table or taking 15-minute trips to the bathroom. Um, they are going, they're coming back. We also instituted a different hall pass system too. Um, but the cellphone plan has really had a huge impact. I mean, are we 100% foolproof that the kids don't have them on them? You know, we're doing our best, um, but it has made such a dis-, a, a difference in discipline. We see less cellphone discipline, um, issues too, which has been really great. Um, we're also just working on, um, continuing to work on our study skills. We talked about that last year, the implementation of, um, just teaching students how to be good middle school students. And we've done a lot of work on that from the beginning of the year. Um, and throughout the year, we have some upcoming sessions in our connections. Tomorrow, um, I'm going to be meeting with the sixth-grade teachers to kind of help that transition from six to seven. So talking about maybe what are some changes we could do in sixth grade to help them feel a little more middle school and help them get prepared. You know, because they come from elementary school thinking an A is a bad grade. Like we have to help them with that, you know, transition because A is approaching in elementary school. A is the best you can get in middle school, right? So just even small things like that, we want to work on, um, helping students with that transition. Um, with our family surveys, again, safety and belonging increased. Um, and overall communication, they appreciate, you know, the frequency and the type of communication that teachers have, that administration has. And then again, the clubs and activities. So we can see themes in the overall data of, of what people are celebrating about the school. Um, concerns, you can see the first one, substitutes. Um, we had some, some issues there. Um, cell phones and then concerns about behavior. So the, the threat is there, you know, from the students to the families. Um, and our response to that, again, the cellphone plan. Um, we are implementing our first in-person parent-teacher conferences. Um, we're going to be uniquely running them. The connections teachers are going to be running them. And, you know, having some student input into those, we're going to have student work to be shared. And so it'll be an overall check-in on how is your student doing? They can't speak to every topic, um, but they can give an overall on how your student's doing in that kind of face-to-face check-in. They started this year with every connections teacher calling the parents of all of their students. And then, um, we started the eighth grade kind of as a trial run where the parents came in, opened house and went to the connections teachers, got to meet them face-to-face. And then, um, when the high school does midterms, we're going to be running our first round of conferences. Um, Scott mentioned the parenting series through our PTC. Um, so we're going to be continuing that this year. We did great work with, um, two local clinicians, Marla Dakin and Dr. Kathleen Webb. Came in and did presentations. Our SRO did presentations and we're going to continue that. We, um, subscribe to a series, um, called Screenagers, which we had done a couple of years ago. They have some updated films that will do screenings with parents as well. Um, and looking maybe to start a book club this year too with parents. Um, and then continuing our communications and supervision where behavior goes south.
So one thing, you mentioned that the kids said something about nutrition, but I didn't see that that got picked up anywhere about the menus?
The lunches?
That's sort of out of our control.
We didn't do surveys.
We, we give feedback, you know?
We do give feedback.
We do give feedback, um, to the cafeteria staff who can then give it, you know, to nutrition services. But I think one of the biggest things for kids is they want a larger portion.
Yeah.
When you see teenage boys.
The teenage boys.
And the ice cream scoop of macaroni and cheese, it doesn't fill them up. Okay. We have a lot of kids going back for second lunches.
For sure.
So.
All right.
Um, and then just continuing on with our, our ROAR, um, respect, responsibility, integrity. Uh, we have some new initiatives this year. Every year we have a theme. So you can see our theme this year is what prints will your paws make on HJMS? So we really want to focus on, you know, what's the good you can bring to this community and what impact can you have? Um, one of those things, kids can get paws and be recognized. This year, we're not only recognizing the students, we're recognizing the teachers who nominate them. So the teachers have been really, they get a prize too. Um, so the teachers have been excited to do that and we probably have gotten more than we have in the past. Um, you can see up on the right-hand side, we're also instituting just some competitions. The record we started last year is just a fun, it brings you back to your radio station days, Name That Tune. We do it during connections. We play a little, you know, two seconds of a song and the kids have to call and name that tune.
I like that.
The broom is going to be new. We're doing the golden broom, so the cleanest team hallway. And our custodian is kind of overseeing that competition. So we're just trying to do things to continue the community building and, and also bring some healthy competition into the school.
Some traditions.
Yeah.
All right. Next part of this, um, presentation is really to talk about our plans for this year. We've done a lot of talking about that, so I'm going to breeze through it. Obviously, I'm excited to be part of our new strategic plan, um, planning group um, that, that will be working on our areas of focus for the coming years. Um, but just showing that we embed everything that we're doing, um, at Henry James and all of our planning for next year in these documents. Um, we always, so we kind of married the what prints will your paws make um, to our priorities that are, that are categorized by the different district priorities. Um, and we've talked about most of these, um, so I'll just provide some quick highlights, um, as we go through here. So climate and culture, um, the things that we're working on is our behavior matrix. Our encouraging words campaign, um, a cool activity we're going to do in the next month is to have students create posters, um, by creating like a Google form. And then, um, they're just going to put down, what do we, what shouldn't you joke about? So like, what are the things you don't joke about? You don't joke about family. You don't joke about like, and so we're going to have them come up with all those kinds of words. And we're going to have a kind of a commitment as a school community, we don't joke about this stuff, um, whether it's online or in person or something like that. But they're going to make the words. And so then I'm going to design it and create that with them. So that's an exciting thing to come, so give something concrete that comes out of encouraging words campaign. Um, everyday speech is, um, the district-wide program and we're using our wellness. Um, and I've talked about wellness quite a bit, um, at this, in this seat about how we're just so fortunate to have wellness every day. Um, and so we're really incorporating that into our wellness classrooms. Uh, we talked about the PTC learning, um, series. Um, the conferences, we're extremely excited about implementing that. Um, new clubs, I'm going to give you a highlight on the news club at the very end, but we also even started the Juzitu Club. Um, a student wanted to start it, I'm like, ooh, I'm not sure. Um, but I've gone and visited it and they're being safe and they're, and they have, um, one of our new teachers, Mr. Buckingham, um, is actually, um, joined up the club with, uh, with a couple of the students. So, um, really good for them to have that. In terms of the student growth, we've talked a lot about this tonight, so I don't need to go too much into it. Um, the form that we're having students use to reflect on their Smarter Balance scores is there. I mean, some of the things that they said.
It's in our folder.
It's in your folder. But some of the things they said when like asking about your scores last year, just some reflections. You know, they, a couple of kids talked about, um, I wish I didn't have so many teachers for math last year. Like I heard that out of their, in their reflection. A bunch of them said, I wish I didn't rush so much. That might be why, like I didn't increase as much as I thought. Um, I want to do better next time. So I think just by putting a survey in front of them and having them like be exposed to their data um, and doing some reflection on it, I think will cause some buy-in, some agency with them, um, the next time around, um, that they take it. Um, I mean, one of the students says, wow, I didn't think I would have seen these scores. I didn't think it mattered. Um, so that, like, that's just direct quotes from, from them. Um, excited about IXL. Um, we talked enough about math. Um, and the collaboration across departments is really exciting.
You just kind of mentioned, I want to think about something Brian said earlier about this. I didn't really think about it until tonight, but this is a level where, and Jacqueline said this too, sort of this test. It, it, I don't know if I want to say this right, but they, they don't, like with the SAT, right, it's about getting college.
It matters. Right.
So I'm trying to figure out a way we can help make this, this SBA's matter. And I was wondering, can you tie it to the paws recognition at all or anything?
It's tied to a couple of things. So, you know, the seventh grade scores are tied to a recognition that we give in eighth grade. Um, you know, so that's, that's a piece of it that we talked to the seventh graders about, um, that, that it matters there. Um, but I think sometimes we underestimate our middle schoolers, to be honest. I think if, if we have them reflect. I think if, if we have them reflect on it and we talk about it a little bit more.
They get it.
They have pride in their own score. Like I think that, like you have to talk real to middle schoolers. And yeah, there are going to be the kids who just blow through it. Of course there are. But you know what? Like when we're comparing to other towns, their kids in those other towns would do the same thing. So I don't want to spend a lot of time talking about that, right? You're always going to get that at the middle level. But I think if you're real with them and level with them, most, especially vast majority of our Sims Berry kids want to do well. They don't want to just dial it in. I don't believe that.
Can I ask a quick question? It's probably maybe to Sue. See, on those tests, I think to me, the hardest problem is, is that they take them in April, let's say, right? And parents don't get the results until August or September, right? And so it's a whole school year already and we still don't know. And so they're not having those conversations at home either. And so is that something that's set because of who's making it that we can't see those results until?
So the actual data is embargoed for a certain amount and they say that you can't necessarily share that publicly. What Jacqueline was referring to before is that we figured out ways to start sharing those results earlier unofficially with our students at springtime, like shortly after they start scoring the ESBO.
But there won't be a public release.
It would not be a public.
And you had to ask for special permission. Did you have to ask for permission to do that?
I just asked around some of the things that we can't yet not share and how we were using some of this data with kids and that we got too far away from the actual test for it to be reinforcing. So we found some ways that we can do that with this this year.
Yeah, I think if they know, they're going to know with their teacher, I think that can make a world of difference.
Oh, yeah. A little more pride.
Yeah, yeah.
And they won't get their exact scores. It'll just be like.
If they met their target.
The bands they fell in. So, you know, you, you at least like.
It's just weird that the state, no, doesn't it, isn't it seem odd that the state is, holds it back for so long to allow the kids any like.
They do their whole statewide scrutiny of how it compared and what they're going to have to release statewide before they ever worry about what's going on in a district.
Because the kids won't really get that buy-in really. Because I mean, even the PSATs and the SATs all come out within, you know, 30 days or something, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
And so.
And it's, it's hard, like we said, that this doesn't, you know, the PSATs carry some weight for that. You know, like there's a lot of things in this, you know, is a hard test to say like.
I'm saying even without the whole counting it towards college. I don't, I don't, I hear you, but I don't know that necessarily that matters. I think our kids in general, I agree with what you're saying, care and want to feel good about it.
Right. And that's why we wanted to be able to tell them, like, you know, closer to when they take it.
Something's better than nothing.
Yeah.
Yep. In terms of the teaching and learning lens, you know, we're looking at the vision of the graduate, really looking at our, like using that in our curriculum review of our math wellness and library media and continuing to look at student leadership at the middle level. With the study skills integration, you know, we're excited about the collaboration with the elementary schools that Jacqueline's going to be kicking off next, tomorrow. But also just want to reinforce some of the things that we're doing with our study skills as well. We're excited about the work that we're doing with students there. And then the new teacher evaluation and goal setting, I think is pushing teachers to engage in more action-oriented research and really their own learning that maybe the old evaluation plan didn't do. So we're excited about that as well.
Scott, before we move on, on the study skills, can you talk a little bit? I understand what the first four is and I think it's fantastic.
Yep.
Can you talk a little bit more about executive functioning, organization, Power School, Google Classroom? How is that being implemented in seven, eight?
So we have a committee that's worked, last year was kind of the first year we kicked it off, where the first three days of school, we kind of did a slow roll into the school year and they spent time in their connections and we developed lessons. So some of it was on how to use Google Classroom, how to organize it. Power School, they're actually going to be the, seventh graders are going to be getting a lesson on Power School. It seems a little late, but now that they're getting grades and they can kind of start to understand like how to effectively use it, how to look at it and kind of, they're going to be writing down missing assignments and, you know, when I need to make them up by. So really kind of using it as a tool versus an obsessive check. So we're teaching them how to use it wisely. Executive functioning, we go through like how to use your agenda, how to, you know, we're going to be doing kind of like a handbook on how to study for tests because they come out of sixth grade, like not necessarily knowing how to study for some tests. Like they haven't taken a big science test, they haven't taken a big social studies test. So last year during one of the professional developments, our teachers kind of wrote down different strategies of if I'm a social studies teacher, this is how I want kids to study. Because even our teachers go, oh, they should know how to study for a test, but, but they don't. And so we're working on that. So the committee is ongoing. It's an amazing group of teachers from a music teacher, special ed teachers, world language teachers. And we're constantly kind of creating and developing lessons that can be implemented. A lot of them are through connections. We just did one at the beginning of the year in the ELA on how to write an email. Like how do you use Gmail? Because they don't, this is the first time they get an email. So we have to teach them they don't write the entire email in the subject line. You know, that you write Dear so-and-so and you write, you know, your message. And so it's a lot of just how to use the resources that you have wisely and how to access what's in the building too.
This, this sounds great. I'm so happy to hear all of these things. On the, what you mentioned about each teacher, like this is how you study for a history test or science test. Will that also include this is how you take notes for, in a history class, in a math class? Because I don't think these kids know how to really take notes.
Yeah, that's a hard one to do per se in that, like, we're kind of hoping to develop almost like a little handbook, but teachers are very particular about their note-taking in their class. So a lot of teachers build that in, you know, within their classroom structure. Math might have some guided notes or, you know, you might do outlining in one class. So it's very specific to the class, so it's hard to make a general rule. But we could have some kind of general tips in the back.
I think that would be really, really helpful.
Yeah.
And also.
Your study skills are not, they're not teaching them.
They're not, yeah, they're just not being taught.
And they need it more than ever because there are more things available to them. The old days it was paper, book.
Right, right.
And you learn study skills and now there's like 5,000 options and you don't learn study skills.
Well, I realize too, also it's, it's doing the study guide doesn't mean you've studied.
No, it does not.
Right.
Filling in a blank here and there on a study, a study guide, read by someone else is not taking, not hearing information, processing it, synthesizing it, putting it down on a piece of paper to retain for purposes of studying later or a computer. So last question on this. Are you, as part of your work, maybe not tomorrow, but with going down to sixth grade and including them, how are you, how is this, some of this being pushed down to them? Because they don't have classroom, well, they have classroom. They don't have email, they don't have any of this stuff. Are you, is the goal to push all of that down as well?
I think we have to work with them and work within their structure and their framework at the elementary school and the resources that they have. So last year, we kind of opened the door for this conversation. We did a presentation at PD in March. It was called Stuck in the Middle, right? Because we're in the middle of receiving and sending. And so how do we kind of get them acclimated to middle school and then send them off prepared for high school? So we shared the work that we were doing and a lot of sixth grade teachers came and they were excited about it. So tomorrow is really a brainstorm of hearing what they do because I think it's really important, having worked at the high school, having worked at the middle school, that you're not placing blame. We're not saying, hey, you aren't preparing kids for middle school. So we want to know, get a better sense of what they're doing and how can we work together to ease the transition for our sixth graders.
Because it is a big transition.
It is, right.
Speaking what they want to take on. So the conversation is going to be co-facilitated by Jacqueline and also Beth Hennessy as an elementary principal. But our sixth grade teachers are eager to make these transitions happen and want to practice some of these skills because you've heard and some of you have experienced that sixth grade needs to start feeling different. They get pretty tired of the same old, same old and feeling like an elementary kid when they're ready for that middle school job. So we want to start organically with the teachers and I think some exciting things will come out of that and we'll certainly update you on those conversations.
This is all really excellent work and I'm very excited about it. So, Henry James, you are, you have a second to get them adjusted and then the next you know, you're getting them prepared for the next minute. They just don't have enough time to really do it. So if we can start earlier, I think it's fantastic. Thank you for doing this.
Hey, on the topic of those, just two questions on things. We talk about notes, we talk about test taking. Two things I was curious on as far as part of this is like writing papers, like term paper preparation from when they hit the high school and some of it's going to be longer, right? I don't think they have like exactly the longest writing assignments. And then also AI, right? I think that's always a hot topic on these. So I'm just curious, I think we hit all of them. The two though is the philosophy on writing papers and the Chromebooks and the speak-to-text and all of that. And then that kind of goes into like the AI. Just any thoughts on that?
Sure. Yeah, so I mean, I think that's two pieces. Number one, we do have in eighth grade, a number of interdisciplinary assignments where they're working with, say, social studies, there's one they're developing right now with the new social studies curriculum, where they're working on the content with, with social studies and then writing a first-person account of somebody who experienced some event in the American Revolution. So some longer form pieces that they're working on. But oftentimes we're using those, like the seventh grade does one with English and science where they, they do a piece on the environment that is a, it's a longer form writing. But yeah, you see kind of a mix of it and we definitely want to make sure students have that experience with the research. We've got the place to do it here. And we have a new library media specialist who's, who's eager and is already working with the, with the departments to incorporate some of the, some of the newer stuff for longer form writing. And on the AI, I am part of the AI committee. I mean, as a district, just like all other districts, we are working on developing policies and procedures of how to, how to work with AI and be able to, A, like use it for, for good, but then also make sure our kids aren't taking shortcuts with it either, right? So more to come on that, I'm sure.
Appreciate it.
Yep. All right. Last thing, strategic investments. So just a couple of things we want to think about. Our Title I, staffing, our study skills teacher is one that I think we're probably going to, you'll, you'll see in my, in my budget proposal to move into the operating budget. It's something that, that we know we need and shouldn't be continuing to rely on grant funding for support and professional development for new teachers. We have a number of new teachers here at Henry James, so we are working closely to make sure they're supported. Our enrollment has gone up this year. We, we talked about that quite a bit at the last board meeting and just keeping an eye on any enrollment-related expenses that maybe we didn't anticipate last year as this is as big as Henry James has been in a long time. And it will be not as big as this next year, but still bigger than we're, I think accustomed to. And then our tech ed department, our whole tech ed is turning over. So I want to keep an eye on that as well. Paul Smith is, is retiring too. So we want to keep an eye on that. That's our strategic investments. And then I wanted to leave you with like just a little clip from our newest club, which is Henry James News Network. It's a rough cut. The club's only been, only been in operation for about two and a half weeks, but Kelly Callahan is leading some students to really create something pretty cool. So I'll just, I'll let it run here. It's about three minutes.
Hello and welcome to HJMS.
I'm Lucy.
And I'm Sadie. We have Sadie.
I'm the queen of Ally Benjman.
Take it away, Sadie.
Hello, my name is Sadie Benjman and I'm the queen of Ally Benjman, the author of our one school project. Do you have any public speaking today? Do you have any advice on public speaking?
The best advice I ever got about public speaking was from a friend of mine who was a former stand-up comedian. And it was very early into my public speaking days and I had to do something in front of a very large group of people in town. And I said, eh, I don't really, I'm not great at public speaking. And she said to me, she literally said, no, you can't be like that. When you are speaking before a group, a group wants to see you having a good time and that's what allows them to have a good time. So as a kindness to the people you're talking to, you have to look like you're having fun. And it was great advice because it took me away from thinking about myself and my own discomfort to thinking about the people who were in front of me. And not unlike the character in here who talks about taking it till you make it, it turns out when you look like you're having fun, you generally.
Amazing advice. A new statewide competition is coming to HJMS.
The Golden Broom Competition.
In this competition, teams will compete for the cleanest hallway.
The team with the cleanest hallway will receive a reward.
Tell us more, Mr. Sean Burn.
Hello, everyone. Today, my name's Simran and today I'm here with Mr. Sean Burn. Later this year, there's going to be a contest called the Golden Broom. In this contest, we're going to see which team can make their hallways the cleanest. And, but for now, I'm going to be talking to Mr. Sean Burn about what are the challenges of his jobs.
One of the big challenges of my jobs is probably keeping the hallways the cleanest is stuff falling out of kids' lockers, trash leaving cafeteria after breakfast in the morning and after lunch. Pencils, scraps of paper.
Okay. Which items do you think keep them the most?
She's very concerned.
Pens and pencils.
Do you think that like in the future, in future years, do you think there's a way that you can prevent or there's a way that students can try and prevent from the pens and pencils and things falling out of their backpacks?
Probably not prevent, but more taking the initiative to pick them up when they see them in the hall. You're very welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Sean Burn. And hopefully those hallways are clean.
Your books are advanced. If you're in the night, you can get five grand off.
A joke from Olivia.
Here's some October jokes. Can you find the unicorn on each slide? Your teacher can pause if needed. What do birds give to trick-or-treaters? Tweeds.
Thank you, Olivia.
I'm Sadie.
And I'm Missy.
And this is HJMS.
If that's not middle school. But we're really excited about the club. The kids are so, they come up to me in the hallway every minute, we have this idea of a new spot. They're so excited.
I think they might be getting a news desk.
We are, we may be getting a news desk.
That is so good.
And these are played on connections.
We're going to be, like this was, like I said, this is, I asked them, I said, I have to pour me, you got to give me something. So they didn't have, like, we didn't get the background for the second shot. I'm like, it's okay. We just want to, we just want to show them a little piece.
They're using our green screen room in here, so they're very excited. They're putting it great in.
That's awesome. That's awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
All right, that's our report.
All right, I have to go, I'm sorry, I know this is really wrong, but I have one more question for you or Scott, I don't know, but the ninth grade, you know how a few years ago we changed and so the ninth graders come in like a half-day early, I believe? We don't do anything for six, right?
They come in and take a tour of the building in the spring.
They come in in the spring.
Yeah, but then that's kind of why we started that like slow roll, so the first half-day, they are with their connections the entire day. So they're doing team meetings, they're going on tours of the building, they're learning their lockers, they're learning the schedule. We have a whole presentation on the HDMN schedule because it blows their mind when they see how the schedule works. So we do a lot and then we spend two hours each of the next days in the connections, kind of doing that orientation. But we haven't done like the day before.
And the Henry, right, with the three half-days, you think that would probably be good, but do you get any feedback on, in those surveys at all that said, you know, I'm, didn't feel I was prepared or, no, they're fine?
I think their, their biggest complaint is that they don't get to see who's in their classes on the first day. Because they're with their connections. So not like the biggest letdown is they don't know who they're with the first day, but no, kids have really liked and teachers have liked that you can kind of take a breath on the first day. It's not, because they were going to classes for like 10 minutes and kids weren't even making it there because they were lost, you know, and you had kids in tears the first day. So it's been a really positive start for them.
That's awesome. That's great.
What I like about all of that, and I know, you know, Jess and I are pretty new, but you, we've talked about this over the years and you guys have implemented it because we've always said that that transition is so hard. So it's just good to consistently hear, that's right. That's right.
Thank you very much. That was great.
Thank you.
Appreciate the conversation. That was a great discussion. Amy, Maryweather.
Okay, I was kind of like, I'm having fun.
No pressure.
It's the April fourth, as we have just started this year, so there's not a ton going on the first quarter, but there are a couple things I wanted to keep you through. So looking onto the open choice attendance in early warning, I just wanted to note that we're receiving about 1.7 million in the current fiscal year and you'll see that this is quite incredible, due to from last year, about 10,000, 16,000. So this is due to having about 10 less kids for our open choice program, it's about $10,000 per student. This is just something that we want to keep an eye on during the budget process as we do use those grant dollars for staffing as well as equipment. Neil can speak to it way more, way, way more, yeah, way more detail than I can on open choice program. But if you don't hit certain thresholds, score percentage enrollment, then you start using a portion of our funding. And because we have so, so much staff and equipment attributable to that grant, we just want to make sure we're either taking measures to hit that number or taking some stuff out of that grant and putting it into operating. So that's something that we'll be looking at during this budget process. The special education basements in our access cost grant, our filing for our 10-year enrollment is due on to summer first, so we should have a good idea about our access cost reimbursement probably in January, end of spring. And then one thing that I wanted to talk about related to our special education is during our part-year deficits, we had the tuition issue as well as transportation issue. So during the part-year, we are actually in talks with another third-party vendor to start developing hopefully an extra contract on the side if we will for our special education access run. Right now, we just go, we just call the vendor, whatever vendor's available, wherever we can get the best price. So we're trying to do a collaborative arrangement with one vendor and see if we can kind of work forward towards something that gives us some cost containment and also gives them business and see if we can work out a partnership there. So we're going to come on that. Those are all the highlights I had for grants. Moving on to expenditures, just two things I wanted to note under the food services line item, we had noted at the end of last year via the results that we have up 10,000 charged to this line item for our food services director's salary, likely to happen again this year. But in looking at the, the state guidelines, there are other items that we can shift from our operating budget into our nutrition services budget, so hopefully that will be cautionary to all. And then the last thing I just wanted to point out is under the operation of plant light item. You'll see our spending getting up about 2% compared to the beginning of last year, but on the town, so our town side, our public works director has reached out and our electricity costs have, they're being pretty considerably might have been about 80. So just to give you an example, one of our buildings over at the WPCA, for example, their electricity cost went up 50% a month. So, something that we may be looking at this year as far as some budget containment and then obviously into next year, the budget process and through the full year. That's all I have for highlights unless anybody else has any questions, happy to answer them.
Clark, two. So, one, on open choice, I just, you know, Lydia can speak to this a little bit more, but it seems to be a statewide thing that a lot of folks are saying that their numbers are going down, so it's not just us, I would say, just listening to other Board of Ed, you know? But then the other question that I was going to ask was, you know, with us personally around the electric, you know, we have this thing where you can go in and change a distributor, can you do that on business, on commercial?
Yeah, we actually negotiate our energy every year, at the beginning of the year, we have an actual, we have an energy consultant that we use on the town side and the education side and they do the negotiations for all of our utilities, gas, electric, protein and so forth.
But as the rates drop, can you drop, you know?
I think we lock in.
Double-check that because a lot of, I mean, that's what we do personally, you know? And there's some savings usually. That's what I had.
Just a quick, Amy referenced the district tuition, I mean, I see the numbers here, but just curious, just how you feeling? You feel like we're going to, because that's always a white-knuckling it right at the end of the year on that one, just want to make sure you're doing okay.
So, our budget director has from the numbers thus far, we are in good shape right now, about some of the special education, special revolving. There are two students that we are keeping an eye on right now to see if they come back into our care, if that will increase our tuition cost, if so, it could be considerable. But as of right now, we're status quo, we're better, we're okay.
And those two students under state care right now?
They are.
Yeah.
And they can return to us almost at all instances.
Right.
So it's something that we have to keep a very close eye on.
Great, thank you. Bring us on, Mr. Sullivan.[1703.66]